Welcome. Time's up in the planning board meeting of November 7th, 2019. Tonight, our meeting will start with our public hearing, Hopper Road LLC Event Center, map 234 lot 049, and then we'll go over a site plan review application. So now I'm going to open this up to the public here, and I'm going to ask anybody in the...
Let them go through the project?
Let them go through the... what you're going to do. You can... you take over. You like a narrative.
Alright.
Tell us what you're doing, what it's all about.
Well, good evening, everybody. Here are the four owners of our 189 Hopper Road, up there near San Pedro Post Office area. My name's Paul. This is Cole.
I'm Cole.
I'm Scott.
I'm Katie.
Hi.
Man, we saw a lot of potential in that 50-acre property up there. It had been for about 20 years logged in mind as a gravel pit, several sites for gravel, and it generally just fallen into disrepair. So we saw it and really fell in love with it, and we thought that it would be a good place for an event center. And what we mean by that is since it had logging trails already, it could be a good place for cross-country skiing in winter. We could build a beautiful barn, a timber-framed barn, that would be a place for family anniversary parties, weddings, community suppers, workshops, things like that. So kind of try to bring a lot of different, unique events to the area. We recognized from family and friends that Acton was a very popular, like this whole Lakes County, Lakes Region, York County was popular with tourists. So we could give the tourists things to do and reasons to stay and spend their money, let's say, credit in the area. So what you're about to see is our plan. This shows the 50-acre sort of wedge-shaped property.
That's a point to write in front of it.
Oh, okay, great. And I'm not sure I can talk in points sometimes. One of you can point and I'll... And so what we have, where Scott's about to point, is the new barn, 60-by-60 barn, one-story, beautiful timber frame. The property had three little houses or buildings on it already. One of them was a perfect little sort of ski house, for example, where you come in and stack your skis outside and buy hot chocolate and coffee. There were two small houses that would be for day use by anybody using the property. And there was already a big cleared spot, a big gravel area that could be a perfect parking area, and we call that parking level one, and then down below is two. And then, this doesn't show it, but there's a large network of trails already kind of flattened and raveled for us to use. So, that's it. Our name is Hopper Road Event Rentals, and specifically for weddings, we have a brand called Barn Lights Weddings Events. And we've gotten a lot of great reception for this. People from the area have heard about us coming, and they've been excited to have their family event there. So not just private events, but ticketed events. That's our goal, is to be able to say, like, you know, certain type of farm table supper, different types of... it could be fundraisers, meetings, all kinds of things where we know in advance how many people are coming, up to our design load of maximum 180 people. We really can only fit 160 plus 10 staff, let's say, parking attendants. So...
Yes, honors.
Yeah, all kinds of things from theme dinners, maybe Valentine's Day ball, singles, mixers, all kinds of creative events, things to do in the town. We also were excited about doing workshops for the local schools. The four of us all have different skills, including technology, drone, photography. So we're anticipating being able to have students out of all ages to come learn, even astronomy. Some of us are astronomy buffs, so we want to have a telescope and do events like that. So basically, your community event center.
What was your occupancy, your max talks?
The max design load is 180, but just in terms of our great hall, grand hall space, we really will only seat 160. And our PE has factored in the 10 or so staff as the max design load. So we'll have that sign posted. There'll always be a minimum number of tables so that we don't, you know, the state fire marshal doesn't want 500 people crammed in there
Yeah.
holding torches up or something for a concert, which is definitely not our intention or plan.
How many people are from the public, the dispublic here tonight? So you got two in the back, you got three in the back?
Four.
Four.
Great, okay.
Now that's better for you?
That's good.
Stay away, nervous.
Should we open it up to any questions?
Uh, let me just scroll down the rest of the...
Or do we talk to some points?
Give us one second, please.
We'll just maybe offer a vote. We have a shared right-of-way across lot five, and we share that road with our neighbor, Mr. Myers. And so we're, you know, given the nature of, we'll have a lot more, you know, cars than his family will have, we're happy to take over the plowing and sanding and maintenance of the road and his own driveway, so we'll take care of that running forward. And we've got a good working relationship already with the existing contractor. Good man, thank you for that referral. So these various plans talk about the snow management, where would we pile it. There's just some of the underground lighting for the low-voltage lighting, all of which will be, you know, down focused, low voltage. And especially, we're concerned about light pollution if we want to do some astronomy nights, you know, we get a nice dark sky. And this is where the new well is. And this is the driveway upgrades that we'll do. We show the paved apron. We do need to confirm with the post office that they'll be fine with our mailbox on the other side of the street. I'm not sure about stop, go, stop, you know, but we'll work on that with the post office. It'll be okay, separated by about 60 feet.
Anything else that you want to share before I open it up to the rest of the room?
Anything else here?
There, good job.
We call it animal boy for the week. Well, so, yes, any questions?
Any questions? Please just state your name and...
My name is Dr. Kelly, we're in a butter, Kelly Wychards.
Oh, yes.
And we're also a neighbor, one property down.
Ah, yes.
So, are there anybody residing on the property?
No, sir. No one will live there, per se. So at night, when there's no event, we'll, the gate will be locked with a Knox padlock proof for the fire department. But no, so we four owners live in the area, though, so we'll always be, you know, patrolling, you know, either upgrading something, repairing something, I'm sure. So we will be very much a presence always, if not daily, then most of the time. Does that answer your question?
And then the other question is, what would you anticipate to be your hours block range?
Oh, definitely all events will end at 10:00 at night. And as for whether there were any morning or afternoon events, we would hope so, that we could do, you know, for school hours, there might need to be a, you know, some sort of field trip, so during the day. We will definitely not encourage apple orchard raiding. In fact, we stopped by your property, I think it was this spring did we stop by to try to meet you and talk about partnerships, any type of, pick your own apple day, hosting some of your fruit for sale at our place, so... Do you remember who we met, your supervisor?
Yeah, there was a manager on site. I don't recall her name now, but she was very helpful.
What day of the week did you come by? Saturday, probably?
We have it in our calendar. It might have been a Saturday.
Probably Angelica.
Angelica.
So, yeah. Is there going to be any notification process around events?
Uh, let's see, like an email or a phone call that there's an event?
Well, you're going to have to let the town know something's going to be going on. Not that there needs to be, I'm just...
Right. Well, to our knowledge, we would only, like, if there was a public-style event, like, let's say, hosting a festival for the town, you know, involving farmer's market or something like that, some sort of, like, event, we would definitely notify the community or the town. But if there were private events, like someone's anniversary celebration or something, we weren't going to notify in particular anybody. But as a courtesy, we are happy to sort of let our butters know.
I'm just curious. Bring the process back.
I see. And please, we can exchange our cell phones so that all of our neighbors have our personal contact info. In any case, every event, one of us will be there anyway, so we'll be reachable, but we will make sure you have our contact info.
Maybe my main concern was, you know, potentially late-night nights, you know, 10 o'clock is very...
That's right, yeah. We definitely don't want, you know, we're, well, with the exception of one of us, we're not spring chickens anymore, and we don't like nights either, so...
I can hear the hammers going over there on this video.
That's right.
Perfect, we're working on the...
Right, yeah. We, definitely that will stop soon, too, you know, God willing.
No, not at... I'm fine with hammers.
Thank you for your question.
Are there any other questions? Yes?
Hi, my name is Richard Nass, I live in Acton on Milton Road Road, so not real close to you. So I have a question for the chairman of the planning board. Is this a request for a conditional use permit? So, because this area is not zoned for this kind of a facility, I don't think, is it?
It's site plan review application, and the zone is Village?
Village in transition.
In transition.
So it permits, or do they need a conditional use permit?
It's a site plan review application.
Okay, what is that?
It's a more intense conditional use.
Okay. And number two to the chairman, where is the planning board tonight? I see three members here. Where's the rest?
We do have a quorum. Yes, we do.
Okay. Number four for the applicants, what is their plan on alcohol and marijuana?
Well, that's a great question. So we will have a licensed, certified, you know, facility to serve alcohol.
So you're going to apply for an alcohol permit?
Yes, absolutely. So there'll be another public hearing for that.
Will there be a open bar, any hours where the bar will be open without an event going on?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, what about marijuana?
Uh, we, well, actually, no intentions whatsoever to do that. I do realize that its federal status is changing, for example, a lot of the main laws, but we personally don't want any such events or...
So if the planning board were to specifically prohibit the sale of the facility being used to sell marijuana, that would be okay with you?
Uh, it would be certainly okay with us. We aim to follow the law, however. So I guess I can't say in five years, when the society has fully accepted it, we wouldn't have an event, perhaps someone may, in this very town, may want to sell medical marijuana. I don't know. So if we don't have to be legally constricted or bound from promising never to touch marijuana, it would be like saying, we don't want any smokers on our property. If it's federally legal, we don't need to restrict. But if it's, we try not to be judgmental people about some...
Something about the federal laws, about the state law at this point?
Yeah, both of them, and let's include that in my statement.
Excuse me, Mr. N, but right now, marijuana, use cannabis, or use however, whether the where, who can grow, who can't grow, is it retail, adults only? There's so much up in the air.
So it's state law, it says it can't be, unless it's approved by the town, they can't sell it.
Well, that's what the law said.
So that's where we're at now. So that's what I'm asking about.
We have a moratorium right now
We do?
in this town. So it's about, it's a rather moot point at this time.
You guys have no intention of selling?
No, not at all.
I was thinking.
In fact, the property, you know, hasn't had a history of her... But that's definitely not in our business model. We're all professionals, we don't want to touch certain things over the 10-foot pole. So I hope that elation concerns, right? We're not smokers in any capacity, so, yeah, I don't know what else to say about hurting people's feelings. I may have to watch this in the future.
I think we can move on.
Okay, thank you, sir. And we'll give you our contact information as well, if you'd like that. We'll find you.
I'm good.
Okay, sir.
Any other questions regarding the Hopper Road LLC at this time? Okay, very good. And I want to thank you gentlemen for being here, and I want particularly to thank those of you in the audience who came out on such a miserable night as it is. Be careful driving, but thank you for coming up. And we have a lot to go over with you. We're going to set a time and a meeting place where it's just 20 minute Hopper Road LLC, and we will get to you on that in the next day or two. And we will go forward from there.
Do you guys have a good day to meet out at the site next week sometime? We just have no fire chief, and I want to bring him through the whole process. We've gone through two problems, there's a third one since your...
Okay.
And then now we've got a permanent one, so...
All right. Should we email some times and mon us all at work for you all?
And just trying to see which day he's working, too, and coordinate something, and we'll walk through the process with him.
We'll go through that.
I think he's already talked to you, one of you guys he's talked to, yeah.
Yes. So was he the interim or the final?
No, we know how...
Okay. All right, thank you, man.
Rick Smith is our fire chief.
Is it the last one?
As the last one standing.
All right.
Okay?
Yes.
So if, can I, Dana, the holiday is coming up, but we want to move as forward as you do, so please, a day when we can get together.
All right.
We'll be good daytime.
Yeah, we'll do a daytime site walk, break through, turn in radiuses, parking, things like that in the facility for him.
And then we'll get together.
Then we'll just have one specific night for you guys. I think the checklist is 14, 15 pages, and we'll just go through it.
Fifteen pages of checklist to go through with you.
Now, we've had your public hearing, really no negative comments.
Yeah, we'll do that, just...
Yeah, we'll email you a copy of the checklist if you haven't got it already, and then schedule now.
If you want to schedule something while we're here, I'm available Friday and Monday.
Next week?
Well, tomorrow and next week, Monday, as well as Saturday, if you wanted to do Saturday.
Yeah, I even got a reply back from him. I would imagine that's probably short notice, but...
Seven days.
Any day bad next week?
Well, I'm not available next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but...
Yeah, Wednesday's out for us, but otherwise good.
Any day on Wednesday? Any day Monday's out, too, probably, because Thursday-ish maybe, but hopefully Thursday. No, it's just me and Fire Chief.
There's not a site walk, it's bringing the fire chief up today and go with you those things.
I'll shoot Thursday at 2:00, try that, and if it works, it works, if not, no.
And again, Monday or Tuesday at 2:00 is good as well.
Yep.
Or Saturday at 2:00 is good, it's not that we're urging you to work.
Just give us calls quickly and we'll know when Chief Smith is available.
All right.
We can make that happen.
And we'll have the state fire marshal's approval soon. I think the PE's and the life safety director have completed their... But my main concern was that, you know, like I said, that from their point of view, the tables could all be cleared out and, you know, more than our design load could be present, even though that's never our intention, the tables are basically a permanent fixture, minimum of five for 50 to 16, so that was the last exchange, and there'll possibly be like the placard that says "Design Occupancy," you know, "Design Max."
Max occupancy.
Yeah, on each end of the building. So, short of bolting the tables to the floor, which we're hoping to avoid, because we may want to move them, but...
Right, right.
So we'll keep it posted online, and they'll give us a, what type of signed approval or some sort of document that we'll...
Application from them, yeah.
Okay.
Now, the state fire marshal can, when they get the report from them, requirements, it's also the fire chief, I mean, is it the whole?
To determine the occupancy, though?
It's the occupancy, but the whole...
Fire marshal's usually going to be accessibility, in, out, exiting, and things like that. Fire chief's probably going to look at it as the entrance, all the way in, the parking, if their largest truck can make the, if it was a fire, their pre-plant attack, how they're going to do it, what they're going to ask for, needs warrants.
Do you have a chance to turn around?
Scott, did you show Chief Smith our life safety plan and that document, or...
He said he was looking at stuff that you had planned.
Yeah, so we forwarded all that stuff to the... All that. I don't know if they've got the final November bit, it could be the September 9th version that he may have, so...
And we do have the actual life safety plan, which is not a big print, it's like a letter size and stamped by the design, you know, life safety people, so we can bring that for him if you want.
Yes, do you have that electronically?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could send that to me, and I'll follow that, and I'll be able to review it prior to...
I have a copy of that, actually.
There was, okay, so we have V2, and the only difference was what was once that kind of large storage room in the corner, 12 by 14, is now cut in half, and it's a hallway for the exit, so it's a little different. Say, nothing effective occupancy, or it's just no longer one big room, it's a hallway plus a storage room. So I'll get that, it's probably not material to the...
Table and chair storage, or...
No, it's, yeah, it's more of a place to put up a few tables that have been folded, but it's not blocked, it's not a room. The other one is like a bar storage, and that one's a small room.
Are we talking about this?
Yeah, that's right, that's the, is the one. And so we gave the fire marshal a new version where that storage room is now much smaller, and it's a full hallway out, an exit hallway.
Yeah, so your electronic...
That's very good.
You have to have that on board, and so he'll have that as well.
Okay. And that's, that's very good. People somehow see a door and think it leads to a second door. It doesn't.
Yeah, so now there's no door, it's actually wider, and the one door is that exit door of light, and so it's clear as day.
What did they tell you, the well of what was, if you want?
Oh. Yeah, we have it on here on the wall page, a good flow.
They were hoping for 5,000, and they got 15,000, I believe.
Yeah, oh, it's on the front, it was nice consolidated.
I found it right away.
There you go.
It's 50 hours a minute, and...
Pretty good.
Yeah, we were happy with that. It's deeper than we hoped, but...
Hopefully, you want to do a launch.
That's right. And it has the keys, it's 70 feet, so it's... Okay, everybody? Great, well, thank you for your time, again, thank you all for your time, sorry to hold up a little bit.
Could you explain that to the process, then, after we meet with, do the capital site plan, or meet with the fire chief, and then we, when do we get scheduled for that checklist?
I think we're going to try to put you on the next meeting, plus or minus Thanksgiving, however that's going to work, unless I'll let you know. Well, I think we've already given you the checklist, the stuff we're going to go through, but we'll send it to you again.
It's changed, so...
Yeah, okay, yeah. The last meeting, we did go through a certain checklist, yeah, to get to this one.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so there's another checklist?
Oh, yes.
You need a checklist to track the...
The checklist, the checklist, we have that.
We have it on the meeting before Thanksgiving, so...
Yeah, we do, before Thanksgiving.
And do you want our PE present at any...
I don't think we need one right now. But we'll go through, like, this is 14 pages.
You said Tuesday was good?
Yes.
Just keep doing chat.
Okay.
Is it actually the next meeting, then? Because we're just trying to figure out workloads and when to go forward after the permit.
Okay, well, you don't have your permit yet, so...
Right, yeah, that's what I'm trying to see, when we actually...
I honestly think you're looking at December, maybe?
Is the agenda full for the next one?
It's getting there. It's getting there, but I, and I don't, it's not going to go beyond that, and I believe we only have...
So one meeting in December? Well, there's two.
There is two, that's right. But if we have to squeeze in another meeting, we've already talked about doing that. If it works for you all, then that might be what we do. When we're doing these larger things, we may have to just do individual meetings, and if we have to, we will.
Okay. With Friday, the 15th?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
No. Sorry, did you say in mid-hour?
Friday, the 15th?
Yeah, that works as well.
Friday, the 15th, first?
Yeah. Scott is available Monday, if that works for you guys.
He's working both those days, so Friday, the 15th works. We'll do noon.
So what he has saying, Joyce, is hopefully everything goes well. A first meeting in December, they should hopefully...
Hopefully, yes. Hopefully, yes.
Yeah, it's going to update that.
This is Mars, this is Venus, okay? Hopefully, that's what it is, but who could be Christmas presents? What can I say?
We'd like to give our contractors their Christmas presents.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
We have Christmas presents on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, very good.
That's our goal. Thanks a lot, appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
And you just forwarded me that life safety plan, the latest update?
The latest update, yeah.
Do you guys want this somewhere else?
I want that, that's the best one I've seen. Thank you, thank you.
Can we sit down?
Thank you, guys. On that call, we actually meaning to order. We are the planning board tonight, the three of us. This is Quorum, we are here. The approval of the October 17th meeting, and the minutes of that meeting, please.
Make motion to approve the episode October 17th.
Nolan, David?
Well, I have a couple of names.
Okay.
On the second page?
Yeah.
It has a document about resource protection buffer, actually referring to the buffer between the properties. I'm pretty sure, not the actual resource protection buffer.
Okay, could you jump me that one again?
No, I'm on top of page two.
I'm on top of page two. Okay. We're regarding...
This is referencing the buffer between the properties, and between the property and the road, and the, and the short drive.
Yeah.
Not the resource protection buffer, and that...
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was both concerns.
I thought it was both, I think it's concerns too, but I'm not...
I don't believe so. The other, the resource protection buffer was addressed in terms of the markings.
Exactly. But, but, listening to what he said, I thought he had both, but...
Was it the spacing of the signs?
No, no, no. No, no, no.
And I use the analogy that if there's a plant, when you cut a couple oak trees, that we do straight or something. Uh, a slope, you can cut it out and get over to that bumper.
No, because on the property, it refers to that there's a natural, there's already a natural buffer. So, that's, I would see that, it's, it's, talking about this buffer here.
Right, right. But...
I mean, we can table it till the next meeting.
We can table it till the next meeting, I mean, um, but I think we did decide that, um, the note was not necessary because there simply weren't any trees that were of a size.
But I'm just clarifying in terms of the notes of what it's referring to.
I see that, but I don't believe that, I would, I agree with, uh, Mr. Wong that the way I took the question was both. He was concerned about, yeah, the, and, and the, and the buffer.
Right, but it says, right.
We'll have to look at the, um, we really will have to look at that, okay?
Or we can wait until Gavin, because that was his statement.
That was his statement.
Or you can clarify me.
We can, we can clarify it, we can hold that, we'll clarify it with Gavin and we'll, um...
I'd rather do one.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just look at what was recorded.
And then on the page thirty, under, um, the conditions for the approval question, uh, number one, that the retail sales will not be conducted.
Will be conducted.
No retail sales.
Okay, I'll go back on that one.
Top of page three, under the conditions?
Oh, yes, yeah, that's a typo, yes, yeah. Marisian.
So, do you want me to make a new motion to the table the minutes until, uh, our next meeting?
I amend your motion, please, to, uh, table the approval until your next meeting.
That's exactly what you said.
That's exactly what you said. It has been seconded. Any further discussion? Hall and favor. So, the, the mess will be, um, tables, uh, no, I think, game, minutes will not be tabled, minutes will be, uh, held uh, until our next meeting, approval of minutes will be held.
That's a good point of order then.
Yes, we're not gonna table them, we're not gonna sit on the table.
That's right.
Okay. Um, whole business, Hucker Road and LLC, as you all saw, we will go through them, uh, with them, uh, after, uh, fire chief inspection and perhaps add a, which will, by the way, when we do have a public, a, a meeting like this where we'll take one particular, um, application, it is a public meeting, so it's not that we're gonna have a meeting that no one can go to. Anybody can go to the meeting, it's just a, a time thing. Um, York County, can we have anyone here from York County? Okay. Mr. Martell, I'm seeing you here. And Brad?
Hello.
Definitely before, right?
No, it's really tasty.
Okay, did you see the flour on it?
No. I, um, my train of lead won't be with us tonight, she got tired in Portland, just wanted to give you heads up. So, I, I had another lot firm that they can team up for both years of next meeting out of Portland, so I just wanted to give you heads up. She didn't get me a letter in time, so, I guess she was stuck in traffic, so...
It's terrible, horrible life of driving.
So, she apologized, but she'll be at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Along with the new, uh, business firm.
Uh-huh, not a problem. Now, thank you for letting us know, too.
With weather changes that might come tonight, probably just as well as it did come.
Exactly. Okay, where are we, Brad?
Um, the plans that the board has tonight is the same plans that we had with sidewalk.
Okay.
And, um, the biggest change on the plans would be, uh, back we added the houses for each lot, driveways, and, um, and those are depicted on the C one pin. And, um, so that, that kind of shows you a foot, footprint of what these houses, uh, will probably, probably look like in size. If you go to the, uh, C two sheet, you will see, uh, on the right-hand corner is the impervious area. Uh, if you calculate all of the road, uh, driveways and houses, and it's, uh, just below two, two point eight acres of, uh, impervious area for the, for the entire subdivision, so... Uh, the ponds, uh, we still have the two ponds that I think on the sidewalk, we had a chance to, uh, point those out where the locations of those are gonna be. And, um, I do also have a drainage analysis that we have not submitted, I have that tonight, um, so that, so we do have that available.
Uh, you have, you have the pointer there.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, when I was looking at this, I, and it was only me, I had a hard time seeing the boundary between, with the driveway comes on, um, from the, what would be the main road, with the, the lot line and the boundary, uh, can you just show me on?
Yeah, so you mean with the entrance coming in off the Youngford Road?
No, yeah, at the very end.
At the very end, yeah.
The very end.
On lot eight and nine?
Yeah, on eight and nine, exactly. I'm sorry, I should've said that.
Yeah, so that's, uh, this is lot seven in here.
Yeah.
Um, and so, and this is lot eight.
Right.
So, the, the boundary line is, is back in here.
Right.
Between those two lots. Uh, lot eight, the other boundary between eight and nine is back in here.
Okay, well, the driveway's on that one. Yeah, the driveway wasn't, it's on this one, I'm just curious where the driveway is.
Oh, okay, um, yeah, so if you go to C three, do you have that?
Yeah.
And, uh, that.
Oh, that's eight to the beginning, not C three.
Well, C three.
Is it?
Yeah, so the, the driveway is, is gonna run back across and it's split, it's gonna be a common driveway.
Right, I mean, I'm looking at it on this, that fires just, the property line from one lot to the next, does it cross that?
It will, yeah, so that would be a common driveway for lot, uh, seven and eight.
Okay, but it... Common driveway for... So, it comes down, it circles around, and it go...
Yeah, it'll come down.
It bifurcates.
Yeah, and then lot seven, hours construction from here, lot eight will be back here.
Right.
And that was just a way to eliminate a lengthy driveway for lot seven.
So, less impervious.
That's right, it, it actually cuts back and we're close to the lake, so it, uh, so the, the combined portion of the driveway would bring it back down to about this point and it would split, uh, the way, it was really just a way of avoiding an extra length of the driveway, so... And when we do something like that, there would be a, a maintenance agreement between the owners and that would, uh, that would be all set up and, um, you know, once we get everything approved, it would be in each person's deed and spell great out exactly about maintenance and if you're gonna have to pay it and the cost and everything else, uh, it would be all figured out. And once again, we do have the homeowners association, so, um, that would still apply for all of the lots and, um, they'll be under, uh, certain regulations for that, not necessarily about the common driveway, but, um, but, but there'll be some organization of the neighborhood and the four teams.
And do you need a, um, new, um, recommendation or some paperwork from the new fire chief?
I was having to bring him up on it, so usually their concern's gonna be fire safety with the sprinklers in all the house. I had a quick conversation with that, with him as well as that, um, and forwarded these plans, put them all in their box. I haven't heard anything from him. We did talk subdivisions and he still likes the idea of residential sprinkler systems versus fire bones and cisterns and things like that, although you do have the lake there, I guess that would be a fire bone.
Yeah, I guess.
I mean, the last fire chief, uh...
That's the last one.
Talked some of all the road access with fire equipment.
We did get a letter from them, yeah, from, from U S G.
And, uh, it was all satisfactory, uh, in his letter. I just wanna know where this is new application, if we had to have a, probably had to have a new document.
Probably wanna have his attention on Thursday, uh, we'll take a look at this as well.
Okay. I just make sure that, uh...
Yeah, okay, I mean, we have a new fire chief, it's not necessarily...
I, I appreciate that.
No, the applicant's issue, that's all.
The old fire chief was for the prior application, that was, that was my point, and I didn't want, my question was, can you use the same paperwork?
Okay, uh, if it was a prior application, you start off.
I just wanna make sure everything is...
Sure.
So, we don't need to go backwards.
No, we did give you the, uh, sketch plan review, correct?
Yes, yep.
Somebody, please.
I've got the application, or the, the checklist that we're working on.
Do you have that? Let's get, let's get that, go through that and, um, go from here.
There's a five point two, number three.
Under the sketch plan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
She's got her checklist to that. So, that was, uh, date of an onsite inspection.
Right.
Scheduled. Um, five point three, C, how the common area infrastructure will be managed and maintained. Uh, same as when we were starting, we'll need the homeowners association documents and things like that.
Yeah, I did put that in the cover letter. Yeah, I was gonna, I would set that up, so...
Uh, five three four, sketch plan application, we've got that.
We have that, right?
Sketch plan application fee, we haven't gone through that yet. Um, copy of the U S G S topo. Less than that, uh, it's a full-blown topo, usually, is that two foot contour is on this or five?
Uh, that is two foot, that's two foot. Did you get through?
Yes.
Um, I just sent it this way, so they...
Yeah, I didn't, uh, I didn't...
They're supposed to be, you know, named in a point, so you may, they may be confused.
That's...
If you can just get that, Dennis?
Yeah, Dennis.
Right, that's okay.
Okay.
They're all marked up, so...
Well, the marked up means we've gone through it, we have to take it away.
For page one.
I am on three of eleven?
Yeah, three.
Five point three seven? Copy of the portion of York County soil survey covering the proposed subdivisions. Um, actually, at this point, we have subject tested data for each site as well, too.
Yeah, we have all of those. We have done, um, five point four one, that's been done.
Yeah. She onsite meeting again.
Okay, then we have the, um...
Five point four two was, uh, we informed you in writing for the contour levels, you did two foot, so... And that's for preliminary plan. Three was flagging.
Yeah.
Four building footprints flagged and...
We have, which we have.
Done and took care of five. Which that is sketch plan.
That is sketch plan.
So, six one would be preliminary?
Preliminary, six one would be preliminary, so at this point, I, I check it.
So, we'll...
Accept.
Move on to the preliminary application next. Um, how are you guys working with the D E P for storm one, have you got a meeting with them yet or?
Yes, we have a meeting set up for tomorrow, so...
Cool.
And now that we have our drainage analysis, that's part of the documents that we submit back to them.
Yeah, yeah.
So, when you guys meet with D E P, I just wanna be clear, they look the site over, you guys tell them what you're planning on doing, they tell you what you can do, what you can't do, what you have to do.
So, at this level with D E P, what they're talking about is a licensing level at the Portland office, so I would imagine it's a meeting at their office, right? They're not...
It is, yeah.
The, the, the people that do the onsite is the National Resource Protection inspectors, the enforcement people, the, they're the ones that usually go outside. I don't think licensing, I mean, major projects they would, but I don't think for something like this, they would, they would just look at the plans.
So, this would be after the licensing process?
It's a chicken and eggs, and originally, the N R P people had told us to, um, uh, get your town approvals first and then come to us, but at the same time, they also want to see them too, so, um, that's why we had discussed early on doing both. If you can do, if you can get in and talk to them, do both at the same time.
Yeah, it was a lengthy process, so obviously we wanna stop that as soon as possible, so...
Yeah, 'cause they hate wasting their time and then the town has all these changes and then they gotta start all over, so they kinda like to see an approval, but...
Not trying to hate them wasting our time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I've been vetting them out for the last three or four years, monthly, get things, you know, they come out quite often, and I call them and, you know, just to keep them aware of what's happening.
But that's your N R P people, that's the National Resource Protection.
Yeah. The forest tree, I mean, I had them all out there, get the green light from everybody, go out to seal the day.
Did I put the pre-applications in your folders?
I did.
No, the actual application itself. We've done it at the last meeting. Yeah?
Yeah.
Um, October 18.
Yes, yeah. As I went through and we have the completed preliminary plan application, the letter of authorization, we have the current deed, we have the test bit results, letters list, mailing labels, three sets, tag map, nine full sets of plans, and one PDF plan. And we have.
And then checked, checked off for us.
And checked it out for us.
And our checklist is checked out for us. And it's all there.
Brenda will send you an email on what the fee was for the sketch plan and then we'll get one together for preliminary application.
Okay. We have everything here.
So I said, let's just pick away another page.
Pick away another page.
And then, then at the next meeting, you can maybe get an update for how you have the DDP as well, too.
Yeah, and then because then from there, we should be able to get into the mandatory submissions and final stages.
Great.
And things like that. So let's go on to page four, under preliminary plan application.
Application approval, preliminary plan shown, appropriate layout shown on the sketch plan, plus any recommendations made by the board. It's updated a couple of things you had. Really, there's not a lot of difference since this is kind of a revision from the first plan that we found.
It's a revision, so I think there's not much of a change since the 18th. Is that be correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay.
So one is good.
So one is good.
Two is the fee.
Which?
Brenda will send you the email for the fee.
We'll let her take it.
The escrow we had, 6.13, the escrow we had was for the last, the original, the submission. I'll get an update from the financing, just to see what the balance is. Usually she tries to send you an email monthly to show what was at. I don't think much has been spent down on that since the original revision on the clusters. Brenda will send you an email on that to update you if she needs more escrow money.
So.
6.14, applicant is here.
That's where I do end here?
Yes.
Five, we need to send you a receipt of the application. You might write yourself a note for that one. And then we'll move forward with notifying the director of affairs on that, which is D. You guys good on that?
We're gonna notify the butters of the application, where the subdivision approval has been submitted.
The preliminary plan.
The preliminary.
Yep.
This is all under preliminary plan?
Yep.
Definitely.
And that's director of affairs.
Director of affairs.
Correct, yeah. C crosses municipal boundaries. We're gonna notify the towns. A.
Yeah.
Six, it determines whether the application is complete. We're just lacking the fee, which we haven't told them it is yet. We'll have to calculate that out.
Right.
Then I would think you would do the motion to secure that, so we know where we're at.
Okay.
So you're looking at something can, like, what?
A motion to accept.
Accept.
The application.
125.
Well, the preliminary application.
Preliminary application.
Maybe you want to accept it so we can move forward and go through that preliminary application and do a review on that or ask them for more information.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the preliminary application.
So that means starting the process of going through to make sure that the.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, I'll send you that. Is there any discussion? Hearing of discussion? All in favor?
Zero.
Three zero.
Seven, not complete. We'd notified the application of what he's missing. That one's going to be an A.
Yeah.
And I did put in the road commissioner's box, the fire chief. Oh, I think we put a note to send it to the school system as well, too. I'll double check on that. And that was the smaller planes they sent. So I'll bring the fire chief back out when we're out of the barn.
Yeah.
Are you available that day? That was the 15th. Friday the 15th would probably be one o'clock-ish.
Yep.
Well, at the site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
For him, fire chief.
Yep.
Do you have the road commissioner too, Ken?
I sent him, now is this one of the roads that are one guy in the summer, one guy went to?
Yes.
So I threw it in both their boxes. I haven't gotten any, anything back. I'll check with Will on that as well, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'd probably like to drive down there in with him as well, too.
Yeah.
Can I see that? I'm thinking of that. I'll make sure we sent something to the school. This isn't 55 and older, so it could potentially affect the school, but wouldn't likely it hit.
I've got a letter from the school, from the schools.
Yeah.
They're in need of kids, which I'm not going to have no kids on that. Unless you guys try to add to something. I got that letter years back, probably a year and a half ago, maybe even two years ago, but they're in need of kids. The heating schools are not even filled up, but you don't see kids up there.
But who's on the.
Unless they're at the kitchen park or something, or kids camp or something. I could have.
Number of lawn units proposed. Each building lot's laid out.
Laid out.
And that's 14, including the mother.
Yes.
The original.
Yeah.
Length of the road. 8C is multifamily, commercial, industrial, NA.
NA on that one.
Yeah. Board determines whether to hold a public hearing on the preliminary plan application. We've never really done preliminary plan applications, although we did for the cluster.
Cluster.
We had had, but we've never done it for any of the subdivision plans.
And I'd rather be myself consistent.
And with just on the files.
Subdivisions.
When we do it on the final.
And do it on the final.
Since we did it on the cluster, people are completely familiar.
The word's out.
The word is out. I would ask one of you to make a motion that we do this on the final.
I make a motion, we do the public hearing on the final plan application.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Three zero.
Three zero.
So that makes 10 an A.
Yeah.
A is an A.
What else? Ken? On nine, board determine what the, I would say the board determined they did do it. So I don't know if it should be an A.
Oh, no. A was an A. Or 10 was an A.
Okay.
Yeah, so I wrote three zero on nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when we get to final, you come up onto that.
Yeah, thank you.
A, an A. That makes B, an A.
Yeah.
And C was an A. Eleven, really doesn't need to be. We'll work on the findings of fact on the final.
On the final.
That's one. When we redo our subdivision ones, that's one probably does relocate.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why.
And it'll be the same thing where.
I think so, yeah.
The same thing on the, what it specifies in writings is finding of facts.
Yeah.
And reading, and that'll be on the final.
Yeah. So 14 and 13 will be final.
Yeah.
Final. 13, 13C was a cost estimate.
Cost estimate.
The cost estimates we got for the cluster, was that the cluster you gave to us?
It was for the cluster, yeah.
Yeah. Any real change in that? The hammer had changed a little, but.
I mean, the road costs are almost identical to that. It's the same length, same road, yeah. No.
Is just what it says. The board conveys to the applicant that approval of a preliminary plan shall not constitute approval of a final plan or intend to approve the final plan, but rather an expression of approval of the design of the preliminary plan as a guide to the preparation of the final plan.
And that's a yes.
It's a yes.
It's a yes.
It's a yes.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Or would somebody want to disagree?
No, it's. I see his head nodding.
I'm looking for these things.
Yeah, I'm trying to save your voice a little bit, so.
I appreciate it.
We give it a day out of you.
I give it a day.
6.2 mandatory submissions of the preliminary plan, nine copies. Waivers, at least 14 days prior to, that was all handed out at the last meeting. You, we talked waivers originally, but did you pull all the waivers out?
Yes, yeah, we don't have any waivers.
No waivers.
No.
One, the application form, 6.21, location map. Relationship, post subdivision, property showing. Do you guys all understand where it is, according to the map, the plans?
Yes, where it is.
The map on the front page.
The map on the front page is right there. And we have the location, names of existing proposed streets.
Two is.
Do we have a name?
Yeah, do you have a, do you have a road name?
I'm not so sure I want to say it right now. Kind of sitting in the crowd.
You can name it after.
I'm gonna wait till they can peel that too, so.
No, 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 no. I think we should, we can name it after, you know, Kenny or something like that. Just let it go.
Subdivision.
Just let it go.
Yeah, well, he's got the Buzzell Road one on this, too. That's the only subdivision in the neighborhood, so that's on the plan. So that would be 2A. So 2.22A is in it, of existing and proposed streets. Buzzell Young's all on that. Zoning districts.
Districts. Those are.
It's all one zone except for Shore.
It is all one.
All one.
And Shore is in the shore.
And Shore is there, right?
That's on the first sheet, A1.
Yeah. It is the outline of continuous, contiguous openings.
Yes. Basically the mother lot, bottom ground.
Okay.
Preliminary plan with all the dimensions shown in feet, drawn to scale, not more than 100 inch. What's the scale on the main map? Yeah, we go back to, it's 1 inch equals 50. And then A1 is, 1 is 100.
1 inch is 100, that's.
So 3.
And A3 is?
3 is, post name of subdivision, language of route subdivision. Did you get the town? Did you get the town on that?
Yeah, that's in the heading.
Assesses map number.
Yeah.
It's on the application.
Which one?
Uh, mapping lock.
It's right on the front page.
On the front page, yeah.
Right on the front page.
Can't read that one. Verification of right title and interest of the property, deeds and the preliminary app.
We have, over here.
Standard boundary survey. Data bearing, certified by a professional land surveyor. Yeah, so that's the A1, 2, and 3. Yep.
Yeah.
Owners of the fossils located on the ground and marked by monuments. Did you find any pins out there, or?
We did. We found quite a few holes in the stone wall and so that, that boundary reflects all that, so.
Have the Buzzell Road pins been set?
They have not.
They have not? Is that something you plan to do this year?
Uh, we can do that at any time, so.
Yeah. Gee, the entire apostle track shown includes all continuous land and common ownership within the last five years. Maybe that's a separate plan we'll want. Because that's going to be confusing where it was within the last five years.
Yeah, but it does show the Buzzell Road, right, so.
Five years ago was two lots. When you bought it, it was two lots. What were the acreages on the two lots?
Like 44 and 44 or 49?
Yeah.
But if you look at A1, that actually shows the original configuration, the two lots.
A1 is in this one right here, right?
Yeah, so the first.
In A1?
First sheet after the cover sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I did add.
It's not really like that.
Yeah, so I added the boundary plans.
The nines took over.
Oh, into the set, so it's right there.
But there's a boundary. We're just not seeing it on this size.
Is it the hashed line?
That, that was the dividing line. That, that was the dividing line between the two lots, that's correct, yeah. And then you can see the acreage of, uh, of the two of the parcels.
You got good, good with that? Dan, is he still studying?
No.
He's might wake.
Yeah, I'm all set.
He's the only one I know reads a comprehensive plan several times a year. He does. He's the only one, he's the only one who knows.
Every time I read this book, I'm weak.
Oh, please, that was, that was nearly as good as conflict.
H, so we're on six point two, three H, copy of the most recent deed. I love how the assessors have that number.
He does, but they're returns.
Copy of all deed restrictions, easements right of way, and other encoverments that's currently affecting the property. Uh, no restrictions out there?
Other, uh, any...
No easements, no right of ways? Uh, copy of deed restrictions intended to cover all parts of the lots, and I think that was saying that we talked about the, uh, Landowners' Darks, the Property Owners Association, the road. Where Buzzell Road had its own road, that's gonna be, like, that's probably more unique than most of the subdivisions we've dealt because it was on a town road.
Cause it was on a town road, yeah.
So this one will be the road maintenance agreements and any rights, covenances, no chickens, no vinyl siding, no tin roofs, whatever you guys propose on that. So that'll be something we'll still need. Yeah, we do have a draft of that, but we can finalize it.
So that's like, like the agreement that they're gonna have for the home?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Um, a lot of it, the more complicated part is, um, at what point does the home association start paying for the road maintenance? Or, um, when does the developer give up rights? And, I mean, from what you've said, that may be a while.
Never.
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 He's holding the rights forever.
Once you give it away, they'll get it back, and they do what they want, so...
So that driveway situation would be covered in that too?
That would be in, in a separate deed for the, those lots?
It'll be in each of those deeds when they get written. We could give you a draft of how that would look, uh, and it would spell out all the maintenance, and, um, you know, basically that's a big, big item on that, yeah.
So I, I guess as a side note, we had, when you were talking in the cluster, you were thinking only X amount of houses per year for a long-term buildup, so we didn't have to... Yeah, just think it would be built in one summer.
That's what I suggested to you people, and, uh, just, you know, paying taxes, the law of tax, it means a lot, so I just, even one lot a year, it's twenty-two years, and I probably wanted to get around, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was covered, the kids were covered, and the family was covered, so... I think it was one to two, and I could deliver one lot a year, but it doesn't matter.
For a building?
For a building permit.
Yeah, so if the subdivision was approved, the, the, the tax map would show fourteen, you'd get fourteen tax bills, but you'd only build one per year?
Yeah.
Well, I suppose that would be assessing question.
I'm gonna think about that one, you know, either way, that was for the twenty-two.
Yeah.
You know, you know...
I'm interested in the fourteen now.
Yeah, I gotta rethink with that one, if I'm gonna...
And I think that may be an assessing question, if you can't build on the lots that are there, is there a different rate for assessing as well, too?
You know, if this time is cheap enough, I really don't care, I don't mind helping the town, I'll give them the money for the lots, it ain't the end of the world. But as far as that one permit a year, I'm still sticking to it, but I don't know if I'm gonna put it in writing anymore, so... You know, it's just, you know, I don't, I gotta think about that.
Well, if it's not in writing, then it, it's nothing.
There you go.
Yeah, so if it's in writing, then we know, or if it's true a year or something.
But the town is a role ordinance as well, so there's a...
Yeah, yeah, we have a circuit breaker.
A limitation on the, on that a little bit.
Probably five or six a year, but, um, hopefully I won't see it.
I, so I will ask the assessor that question there.
See if there's a difference.
Okay, I'm sure he's not gonna want anything to do with that.
I'm sure he's not, I'm not gonna ask.
Uh, I said, a difference on...
A different tax rate for a lot?
A different tax rate.
For a spread, so...
Oh, you did?
No difference.
You do, yeah.
They said they were gonna try to get as much as they can, and I, I said, good luck, you should, so...
No, what, what was, what was that again on?
Well, they just, the way you get a tax break, if I don't get a building permit, building permit on, you know...
If he's restricted from getting a building permit, should he pay?
Cause when I did the twenty-two lots, I said, so nobody gets nervous and scared, I said, you know what, I wanna do this. When something happens to me, it carries through with it, with the family and stuff, so I says, you know what? Just give me one permit, this way nobody's nervous, boom, blowing in twenty-two houses. And, uh, so I, I looked into it with the town, and they said, now, once the road's in paved, which I wanna do is, uh, for my office reasons, but, uh, he said, now, once the road's in, they're gonna tax me on the full amount for a building.
For a lot.
It ain't the end of the world, you know? So, uh, I mean, it's crazy money with us.
Basically, once the driveway gets rid of the road.
Yeah.
Uh, six point two, three K sewage disposal, test pit data, we've got a stack of them in there.
Yep, we got all the test pits we didn't.
Yeah. Indication of the type of water supply to be used, only more type in this town. Uh, date on the plan, North Arrow, graphic map scale.
Yes, I know that.
Name and address of the court owner, applicant, the individual, company who prepared the plan. The owner by first name.
That's what, that's what restricted, from the video.
Yeah, yeah, I think it should be Brad's Way.
Brad's Way. How was this done, Brad's Way?
Uh, wetland areas, the gadlins of the size, that's on seven, um... That's got the low area in there. How many acreages of wetland was in that low area?
I don't know if I have a calculation of that, I think it was, uh...
That's a common, you could take those to be, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that smaller, isn't it?
Yeah, we're just kind of...
Yeah, I think it was like three acres, yeah.
On the valley, can, on the valley, you say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't even think it was three, cause, cause a lot of it, our funds is somebody else's, or... I think of like two or two and a half acres, something.
Yeah, they don't have that.
Because part of that is the other.
Yeah, it goes on to other people's land.
The other people's land.
It's about three, five there, but, um, um, much bigger than what you've got.
Yeah.
Remember, it is separated, so there's...
Yeah.
Actually, three different, uh, three different wetlands.
So what do we call it?
Uh, well, it's just saying the wetlands.
I'd give you the exact, uh, layout.
Acreage at the other, yeah. And I had brought them, when I was guessing, I was way down into there, so...
My question about that, and...
You're on seven?
Yeah. Or eight. The wetlands, so I'm just asking this, isn't really part of the subdivision?
Well, it's gonna be part of this lot, part of lot seven.
Right.
It was, in the open space.
Okay, I see, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
So part of lot seven.
Yeah.
Usually we're looking at that, cause wetlands isn't part of the lot area.
Right.
Number of acres within the proposed subdivision?
Seven four.
Uh, I think that's on the only view.
I think that's over here, sorry.
Yeah, should be, uh, seventy-three point five, that's on the front sheet.
Lot area. Road frontage, lot nine, so eight acres. Uh, location of the property line. So nine A. B is buildings, existing buildings, got that one, that one, B's. Those are red one.
No.
Listen to the command down at the beach. Good scrawny now.
Uh, they're up in the...
Yeah, I've seen it on some of them, yeah, yeah. Existing buildings B. See vegetation cover type.
Essential, existing physical features.
What the heck is that?
What's mine's up to?
Uh, lots of times it's, uh, ledge, steep slopes.
It's not the non-essential, you can't do a damn thing with it.
Historical things, archaeological.
Well, that's a different story, you know, it's separate.
Cemetery.
That's, that's separate, yeah.
Yeah, so D, skipped on C.
Yeah.
River streams, brooks, great ponds, um...
I think adjacent to this.
Did you get any determination from the DEP for a stream, do they consider this a stream or a brook on this side here?
Um, yeah, we haven't determined that yet, so we do have that located, uh, so I think, I think that was something the DEP was gonna look at and verify.
Is that the one that goes down between two, in the valley, that dries up?
Yeah, there's been numerous times, the, uh, DEP has been out over the summer time for the last two or three years, and every time they come out, it's dry.
Cause I think the first time we went out, it was...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the wetlands are marked.
Right.
Well, the trouble is with these seasonal brooks, or something like that, we're, um, I know down by the school, we have one that's, uh, dried most of the year.
Yeah.
Only has water in the spring, and... I never could get anything in writing from DEP saying that this is a, uh, stream, but when you wanna do something there, they say it's a stream. You know what I mean? But nine months a year, there's not a bit of water falling, falling through it.
Yeah.
So...
A lot of that, a lot of that, believe it or not, a good chunk of that highway goes the other way, goes towards, uh, the school. Probably the reason why it's dry, you know, it's, yeah, it's been dry.
But you get something in writing anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know, yeah. Put that on you this for tomorrow.
Yeah, he gave, the guy that came over, Lucian, there a few weeks back, three weeks ago, after we had the rain, and, uh, I loved the weather from him. Well, he went down, lifted up rocks, looked at them, hugged them, kissed them, waved them. What are you doing, looking for lunch? It was just the way the guy did, it was pretty neat, but he showed me a lot was going on, but, uh...
He's, he's a very good, he's a good guy.
Yeah, yeah.
I can hear a lot of classes from him, I'm sure.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good.
So the constable, see?
I've got it unchucked off yet.
Yeah. What do we call that?
Uh, vegetation cover, we can ask for just a separate, um, plan, just so we don't...
Cause we have it.
Well, if you go to, uh, the E one, the last sheet, uh, that's all the seeding schedule. So I think that's what that meant, right? What, what the actual stabilization was gonna be.
Well, why do you say the uncovered? Not just having it stabilized, though. What's there now?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I figure that would be the, uh, the seeding, the grass, and, but that, that sheet actually details the, the seed mix, uh, to use. I think that proves itself, yeah.
Unusually large specimens of trees. We got nothing down in that lower areas then? Or, uh...
Unusually large trees.
No, I don't know what that means.
I do.
I think it's big trees, Ken.
Unusually large? You got a bunch of them?
No.
Oh.
Big trees.
I know it was, Ken, I know, I just have one. Just tell him.
Something, yeah, maybe a large, it would be that.
Yeah, I've got a watch out for the, um...
Yeah.
It's very big. And, and what kind of a tree is it, because, boy, the ash board, it's all coming up, it's around the stake. It's pretty bad right now, lose a lot of good property.
Yeah, yeah. Zoning districts and boundary, eleven, redundant. Location and size, is that a boundary question, twelve?
That's the, yeah.
No, they refer to the sewers and culverts. Water mains.
Yeah, water mains and culverts.
Is this thing proposed sewers and, you do it one subdivision, septic on the original. Water mains got the N A, you tell where regional planning made this forest. Culverts and drainage way, you had that on the plan.
That's on the plan.
Yeah, that show all sides, uh...
Yeah, cause some of it looked, uh... But, uh, some of it, those property lines and things, the driveways, it got mistaken as encoverments, drainage ways, existing ponds and sewers, so twelve is good, you guys are okay with twelve?
I'm okay with twelve. No.
On site, adjacent to the site. Existing streets, and location name and presence, so you had Young's, Reg. Buzzell on there. I don't know if Young's was on any of that or not.
Yeah, if you look at the cover sheet, this, uh, it kinda goes even beyond that with some road names, so...
Existing streets, highways, easements. Building lines, I think you have building envelopes in it.
Uh, we do, yeah, we've all set that, so... That's that dotted line you see up there, yeah?
But there's a dotted as the sources on this one. The building envelope is right here.
Right, right.
Dash line, the dotted.
The dotted, the dash line is the other.
Yeah. Building lines, parks and other open space, and A.
Yeah, there's really nothing, yeah.
Attention point, we can make pools. So thirteen's good, you guys are good with thirteen?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so we're done. You know, we said we're gonna work on this stuff when it slows down, but...
You just did that on thirteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
So I'll say that's an A.
I checked it, good.
You would.
Yeah.
I would say good as well.
Proposed lot lines, appropriate dimensions of lot area.
We got that.
Yeah, we had that after the A three.
All possible land proposed to be dedicated to product use, and... And conditions as such, N A. Sixteen, N A, were you guys?
Yeah.
Yes, sixteen, yeah.
Seventeen, location of any open space. Preserve common area created by general description, proposed ownership. N A.
N A, yeah.
Existing lot area with existing forest cover, being converted to lawn. Structures and other covers. Get the driveway coverage in there, lot size.
Yes, we do show the location of homes and the driveways, so I guess that kinda covers what are developed in the paint place.
Yeah, two, where two is so different here is this is the old tennis courts. Is that what that is? Yeah. Guys, good with eighteen?
I'm saying good.
I agree.
Thirty, thirty, there is no.
Converted.
Yeah, thirty, converted, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, he's got the lower lying area that's gonna be down in lot seven. Ten acres itself.
Lot seven.
Most of it's all shown as wetland.
Would you say you're.
On eight four, what shows you? The shoreline?
My thumb drive maybe lacking a couple.
Yeah, it does show you the shoreline, it shows the flood, flood plain.
Lucky we didn't make the answer that on speaker.
I only answer if it's God calling. First, and I don't wanna go.
I wanna see if your extended warranty need to be.
They're calling me on my votes, not anything else.
So that second line. Right, eighteen is your? Two fifty.
Two fifty is correct.
Okay.
And then there is an inner line that shows.
Right, says a femur.
Yeah. That's not.
Where he has with nineteen? Gavin's gonna revisit it on the final anyways.
And what you got there?
Because approval of a preliminary doesn't approve a file.
That's right.
Yeah.
So what would we be talking about in terms of existing vegetation?
What would be, that's, to me, that's the question. What is the existing vegetation?
My thing is, when we did the sidewalk up there. I mean, obviously, grass is vegetation. But you get down there closer to the shore, you got some forest in there, which is and it's been, some of it's been marked out by the forest or what needs to be cut out of there for one reason or another. And to me, any restriction would just be whatever plan of the forest that came up with what needed to be cut or what can be cut or should be cut.
And that's all you have to be with the shoreline zoning regulations.
Okay.
That was the only number I had on nineteen.
I'm gonna say for me, just for me. Cause we had to revisit this and the final plan. Then I'm just gonna give a okay for now. I mean, you know.
Well, unless somebody has an issue.
Unless someone has an issue.
Then, then so far, uh.
Right.
Are you gonna submit a revegetation plan?
If, yes, if I got my.
So when we get to the final plan, we'll have a revegetation plan. So I'll add with my shoreline zoning for the two fifty buffer, a revenge plan.
And we do show like on C two, we show the edge of the woods, the wooded area, so that's.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the end, so.
You'll have to get into that, the storm on the pond too.
Ah, that still has to be cut, that's correct.
Yeah. Is this pond here smaller than the one on site, bigger than the one on site, or weighs on site?
Yeah, it's about the same, really.
Yeah. So not a lot of activity for that one there? Just adding this one here?
Yeah, we try to get those in a flat area, as you can see, it really. To get it on a steep slope, it's losing the grain, it's a lot of cotton filled.
Areas identified as the unique natural area of the preservation, I didn't say that's wet. The low lying areas, wetlands.
Wetlands, yeah.
Yeah, the edge of woods, yeah.
The storage places, N A. Schools down the street, yeah. Waiver request, twenty-four was a high intensity soil. Soil maps are on.
Well, actually, we did, we did do a high intensity soil mapping, so we do have that.
That's in here, right?
Yeah, I should have submitted with the first application.
Yeah. I think some of the stuff from the first one, we've gotta move into this one here, such as that, but.
We really need to. I would always spend avoiding shuffling.
Gutting.
To, and gutting, and I'm going to charge you for wallpapering my dining room with the plants, you know.
So that was the first thing? That was the first thing you could have asked for a waiver for? The contour lines dropping down from ten to five, you've got it down to two. N A for that waiver. What would you give assessment?
So I did submit a letter. We did analyze all the wells in the area, and we expanded that with this phase of the project.
Yeah.
So you do have a letter that anything that's recorded on the state website. We went through and kinda narrated the depth of wells and the yield and all that, just to get an idea what we find.
So in the past, what we've done with the clusters is we'd have a hydrologist look at the water flow and determine where the water's going to place the septics. When we were looking at ten, twenty, thirty thousand square foot lots, but these are all two plus acres.
That's correct, yeah.
So I don't see there's a, there's an issue.
As a necessity. Everybody?
Deal with the vehicular traffic. Usually, we've used a number of around eight trips per day per household. The fifty-five holders, I think, are a lot lower.
Yeah.
We're not seeing that as much, but that counts for UPS. FedEx.
Nail person.
Nail person, pizza delivery.
So I did submit a traffic analysis. I do have copies of that.
Was that on the cluster or on this one here?
Uh, I just got that to you recently, so.
Okay.
Anything we can.
Was that just the one copy or was it a stack?
Um, I do have seven copies we need tonight.
Right now? We've got three.
Well, you know, we got three of them.
I'll take them all.
We'll take them all, we'll put them in there for the others. So it's for that.
So no wave is requested.
And the switchboard, and the Leslie's too.
Yeah. So we do have two board members that are working tonight, and we do have two alternate spaces that are open for the planning board. If anybody in TV land knows of somebody that would love to come and.
And join us.
Join us.
Alternates, we we do meet, actually. Every week, we have these meetings twice a month. In the evening, we have workshops at noon time. Alternating weeks from our meeting week. And it's, if anybody's interested, come and sit and watch us a couple times. Talk to our planning director, talk to me if you'd like. We could use alternates. And just so you know that, so it is, it is commitment. We're a busy board for the size of this community.
And alternates can become permanent.
And alternates usually do become permanent members. Attrition. Staying up too late past your bedtime, whatever, people do drop out. So pass it on, and anybody in TV land would be interested. Please call. Call, in fact, you can call our county administrative general if you're interested. Yeah, they should be posted, they should be posting. And it's like, you know, newspaper thingy.
Smart.
Smart shopper. Smart. My public service department, that's what I'm.
So that was it on the preliminary plan?
So this is it on, yeah, this is, covers the preliminary plan. So at this point.
We need to do notifications.
We need to do notifications.
Butters.
To the butters.
Do I have them?
And.
Can I ask about the traffic stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, and here you talk about fifty percent of the homes being single family and fifty percent recreation, what do you think by that?
What we do is we look at an average. There's a lot, a lot of homes around here are not year round.
Summer.
Yeah, so that was just a way of, you know, fifty percent of the homes would not be year round, fifty percent would be, so.
Okay, so you're not saying within this specific subdivision, are you saying in the area?
In, as an average, yeah. And that's what we do with the average. If you look at the next sheet, those are all average trips per day, and it spells out the two different categories of you know, of a full time detached, single family home. And it gives you the traffic count for that, so. And that's the latest, that's the tenth edition. As I found out, ours was updated, so this is the updated traffic manual.
So then based on all of that, the what I remember, ninety-six point eight, is that right?
That's right, trips, trips per, per day, yeah.
For the whole ninety-six point eight? Subdivision?
Sounds like the marcas going into the bass fishing tournament. Walk me through the existing driveway that you convert into the road. There was a grade area exceeding ten or so. Are you altering? What's your thoughts with that, or am I?
So where is that, at the entrance or?
It's a little further down than the entrance.
So that's the profile of the Youngs Ridge Road in our site, just this type of road, yeah?
We had it on some tour, I know we did.
You're, well, you're exceeding the, and I haven't gone through the grade standards, cause.
What is on P two?
Yeah, so we're at ten point eight.
How far does that go for? Yeah, well, that was P one. How far will that go at that grade?
I believe it's eight hundred feet or something like that.
At ten point two?
At ten? Yeah, ten point six.
So I, off the top of my head, I'm going, you can exceed the eight percent for, I think, a hundred feet or so, but that'll be something the final plan will be looking for. I wonder if the regulations, yeah, need you around that, or would you guys have proposed it out there?
Yeah, so I think at this point, it's, we, I'm looking at a class C road. And it's gonna be a private road. And if you look at the regulations that I found, I couldn't find any requirement for grade on a class C road. It will be paved, and so that's gonna make a big difference. But it's, it's not eight percent, it is ten point eight percent at the max.
Is it close to grade now when they're out there?
It is, yeah, that is, that's at ten point eight percent of the road and the way it is.
Within, within a few inches, few branches. I like to keep it at that because, you know, this, you know, nature of the land and how it flows, you know? I mean, I can make it work today. I think it'd be a pretty sight, God rolls and everything else in the middle of the field. You know, cause you gotta fill on one side, and the land slopes down, so I mean, I mean, I can make it work today, it's not gonna look pretty. But just to keep the contour of the land, you know, the meadows flowing, and that's why I like to keep it where it is.
Yeah, it's been a few years since we've had a, a issue similar to this. And I thought it was, you could exceed that for a hundred feet, but it doesn't say, well, you could exceed it too. So it almost seems like you could be unlimited for a hundred, then go back out, which doesn't make any sense either. And I think the board has waived and worked with that in the past, but.
I mean, it's fourteen, twelve and fourteen coming to me.
How do I am forget that about this access? That's why it seems flat.
Yes.
Well, it seems flat when you're going down, it's coming up, so.
Yeah, when you walk it, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when you're walking, yeah.
But once again, the important thing is it is gonna be paved, and it will remain private.
Yeah.
So it'll never be asked to be taken over by the town. So that, that's a big difference, too, if the town's gonna take a road over. They might look at it a little different.
Will we put that in our conditions?
That it'll never be a town road?
Never.
Well, I think you know the atmosphere of how towns like to accept private roads. Usually, it's negatively, that most are afraid if they take one, they take all of them.
Will we do one, one on the, one on the hockey, yeah?
Eagle strays?
Eagle strays.
Yeah, and that was the developer, same as you guys.
Yeah.
They never wanted the town to take it over, they wanted to keep it private.
Was that one of the conditions?
I think that was proposed by the developer. It could be on the plan, it is on the plan, I believe. And that was that the developers.
And again, it'd be a consistent.
Yeah.
Add it to the plan, of course.
I just, since you tried it.
Yeah.
And I'll draw it, if there's a W eleven, I do go out and draw it. You know, street trees, flower beds, and everything, all, you know, I don't, I don't know if they would sand it, salt and everything. So the stray evidence, that's why I just won't keep it private.
Well, I appreciate that. I hear just.
Plant trees, and wind blades and everything else, street trees, so.
I think my concern just would be us sending in the fire truck and ambulance down.
Right.
Police, you know, maintained, but that would be your homeowners association coming up with that.
Yep. Yep.
Beating the checklist up for the preliminary.
I think, I think we've beaten up this slightly, definitely preliminary.
And maybe mostly accept the preliminary plan application.
Okay.
Well, it was to review it.
That was review.
We have some things that we've skipped, what they could be.
It's fee.
Fee, which one? Take us back right now.
They must drive them forward.
So we started at six, one, we have. The first thing on that is the.
Fee.
Fee. But we had a, we made a motion, a motion passed, that, that we would accept that.
We need to send them a receipt.
We need to send them a receipt and notification, because I see three motions on this page and notifications have to go out.
I mean, I thought accepting the plan initiated, these things getting done.
To first to review.
Okay.
So I'd say we, we don't need to accept it tonight.
Okay.
And then we'll just, we'll send you the, the email and the fee.
The next.
You keep mentioning the fee, can I afford this?
It's going to be town.
It's, it's going to be.
It'd be rolling pennies.
Yeah.
I'd say tuck it.
I hit them out. Can I pay you pennies? That's all they got.
Yeah, we have to take any form of currency. So you can just.
All right, so what I would like to happen is would you kindly take your motion down?
Right, take my motion.
You send your motion.
That'll be our next, I'll return it next time.
Thank you, thank you.
If you guys gave it my couple bucks for the kids on the lake, maybe I'll just donate the rest of the money to you, so what's, it'd be nice, so we'll handle it.
Keep it up, we'll put a town beach out there.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah. No, I would argue for that.
Wait a minute, I could do that. I could, I'm bad, I could do that.
But you can't do that till I'm dead and gone.
I think we're better off to move on.
I think we've, we've run on this.
I do have a couple of relocations.
I know we have relocations within that.
Just a clarification question.
Yes.
So you earlier voted to review the.
We reviewed.
There was a vote earlier, the earlier vote, there was three months.
The application.
Was to review the application.
Right.
But there was no vote tonight to accept.
We have not accepted the preliminary plan tonight.
Thank you.
We have not approved, we, we have not, let me make sure we're using the right words. We accepted the application.
Okay.
Our next step was the sketch plan, which we did approve and accept, because tonight was preliminary. We are simply not voting on that tonight. We need, you know, some money parts have to be done, some notifications have to be done. And that will be taken care of and will be, I'm sure, accepted at our next board meeting, but it was not accepted tonight.
So you reviewed it, you did not accept.
We did not.
So it's like the accepting of the application.
So you could review it?
Yes.
Not approved.
So we, so it, it's not that we have not approved it, we have taken no action tonight.
You have accepted the application.
We have accepted it and we have reviewed the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Is that clear enough, Mr. Crespey? I don't want you to review.
No, no, the earlier vote, if I understand correctly, the first vote you take, I mean, I wrote it down in my notes, the motion was to accept the plan. And then it kind of came back and you said review of it, like, did I miss that? And then there was a later.
Well, there's, you set the, you wrote on the application whether you accept it or not. And you have the sketch plan.
Yeah.
You review it, you go through it, you accept it or you don't, or you say come back with this or that and you go to the preliminary. And as I read very clearly, I think even with my voice, that doesn't mean we're going to accept anything down the line, we're doing page by page, step by step.
And I believe the motion was to accept the preliminary application.
Application, yes, absolutely. That will be clear in the minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anything else?
I think, oh, we're all set.
Okay. Thank you very much. We shall see you in two weeks.
Two weeks, we'll take you back there.
Yeah.
Still, we have seven.
This is two firsts. Twenty firsts?
Twenty firsts.
Can we push out? Hey, but some of those other things that you sent you out and you did give us tonight, but you make sure that you did give us copies, you said there's copies of a couple other.
Oh, sure, yep.
Yeah, that's, I, you know, my folder, we have them very dear to me.
I do have a copy of that, the well analysis.
Yeah.
Might have a couple of those.
If you could just give one, I think any other thing, then you guys could put them off everybody's folders and.
I think that we could judge him, you know, he has always more than himself.
That's true.
Are you guys all set?
Yep.
All right, thank you guys.
Onto new business. If anybody else here for that, Ellen Berry, are you here? Come on down. Give me a minute to check for that. Okay, can I protect the legal problems? Okay. Okay. And back on, everybody going to.
Do you want?
Where's your document? Go out to new business.
Oh, it's serious.
It's serious. It is. Ellen Berry, one oh seven, Loop Road map, one four nine, one zero eight nine.
It's an aperture.
Best practical location application to demo and rebuild an existing camp, but in the allowable thirty percent expansion allowance. And we do have pictures, it is so nice to be home.
So how big is the lot?
Yes, not Mary.
Yellow is, what else?
Existing.
Yellow is existing. It's fifty feet from the water now, fifty feet, two inches to the overhangs. It's forty-eight feet from the road. It's a fifty-foot setback from the center of the road, so it's already too close to the road and it's too close to the water, so there is no moving it backwards or forwards. It was two feet from this side and greater than ten on this side here, so they're proposing to slide this over to six feet and maintain the ten here, but keep it front and back the same.
Okay, so who was that?
Someone, yeah, not much.
What's the gray area?
The old house.
And that'll be gone?
That'll be gone, so the new ones.
So.
No, the grays that are proposed, sorry, yellow is the old.
Yellow is the old.
So they are straight and yellow.
So it is going to be.
Yeah, fill it in this corner and slide in, put a little porch there.
Yeah. So they're already too close to the road, they're already too close to the water, they're already too close to the neighbors on one side. They were cam, yeah. It kind of looks like it better stay where it is.
It is going to slide a little bit over.
Yeah, but allow that to get away from that two-foot mark.
So now closer than fifty feet from the water, forty-eight feet from the street and six on one side.
Fifty feet, two inches.
I was giving them the two inches.
You're going to give them, you're going to give them two inches?
Well, we've got the survey, the survey will show it, it'd just be easier for the minutes if we're not counting inches. I would think. So the motion.
It'd be pretty good.
Fifty from the water, forty-eight from the street and six from one side.
How many of the, this is on Loop Road, probably at the center of the road.
The survey or?
The survey, it was the survey.
Where's the septic?
Brand new septic that is five years old, four years old.
In August.
Just last year, yeah, there was five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the septic is right there, that's brand new. Right there. Really, there's no place for it to go except for sideways a little bit, so they'll come over to the ten-foot and that's going to change that two feet to six feet.
Right.
So it's something.
And, and they are going on their full a little bit?
A little bit.
Now, what's a look like now?
So thirty percent of, not much is, not much.
And not much.
Yeah, they'll end up filling this corner a little bit and bring a small gate into it.
Small, medium gate.
Yeah. By today's standards, I would say small.
Okay.
I think the septic is a three bed.
It is three. So it is a small.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred square feet or something.
Yeah.
And they're not really touching anything in front of the house. I mean, they're going to have to put into Russian control.
Yeah, with the, with the revegetation plant, York County water and soil. Three, four, five years ago, York County got, the people we were working with moved on, they got their master's degree and moved on. And it was difficult for people, because you had a whole manybody there, get them to come out and get any, any documents out, so we were starting to allow actively fill watersheds and people like that to do plans, the contractors. York County's back on, they've got a great designer out there, she's readily available, it's not that expensive, so went back to pushing the York County water and soil plans, rebench plans. One of the projects we did on Hungry Point, he just came in and two hundred and ninety-three plants, I think he said that they have to do out on, on Odyssey's.
Yeah.
And that was just a command, that he had to plant on, that was a command that he did on thirty acres. That was less cost.
Straight from D E P.
Yeah, she, she used to be on the Meriva side of the D E P.
Okay.
So she was enforcement, now she's, and then the ordinance just says you mitigate stormwater and that's kind of big and, I mean, it's the comfort level they have, so.
Okay.
A lot of pressure.
There's a lot of pressure on this one, guys. It comes down to the three of us.
We have to hold you over this.
All right.
I messed up my plan one night.
Okay, I will be, recommend for best practical location for one oh seven, Loop Road map, one forty-nine, that the new building needs, no closer than fifty feet from the water, six feet from one side, ten from the other, forty-eight from the center of the road.
Second.
Discussion?
Just, I just want to publicly say you did a good job.
Looking at vegetation stuff that can.
Yes, yes, they do. All right, anything else? Reminder, we meet next Wednesday, noon time. We're going to have a couple other, uh, get togethers in between. And we did, the others aren't here, but that's okay. Dennis and I with Brenda and Kenny went to Seven Main Seminar. And Christina, and Christina.
Sunday, Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, okay, in Sanford. And there were things that we learned, there were things that we learned. And it was, it was, I think it was particularly good having Christina with us, where she does our minutes and such things. It was very, they did give us thumb drives to, rather than passing out paper, we got thumb drives. So I'd be happy to share mine with you if you want to download. I mean, we didn't even really get an agenda, it was all.
Yeah.
All on the thumb drive, which, which was a little bit, I think I would ask for a paper agenda, but anyway, we might, it was good.
It would be.
It was good, we, we, yeah.
Anything like, think that we should be paying more attention to or doing differently?
It all comes down to findings of fact.
Findings of fact.
Things out, to have a good findings of fact.
To really spell out why.
Exactly.
Yes, to.
Disappointing data.
Disappointing data. And there's a bit information, again for Christina, on what needs to be in the minutes.
Time.
Time.
Who's here?
Who's here? And motions.
That's it.
That was it.
Really?
That was it. No reason to have discussion in there.
And it's been like that for years.
Yeah.
It's just that there's a lot of people that like to have that conversation in the minutes. But I remember many years ago, Lou Lorraine, when people criticized what she didn't or did put in the minutes when she was doing it, and she says, well, she says, the law says all you do is the motions and the vote.
Joyce, excuse me, is it, are you almost done?
Yeah, almost done.
Okay, because both batteries are low.
Okay, eight minutes. I brought you up to the meeting we went to, I'm just, I'm on that, so I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, that's good. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all right.
You do the job right now.